At this time, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Steven Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Lance Smith.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Melanie Monson.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we're going to rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance, and the invocation will be given by Rodney Corvus, one of our planners.
Thank you. Lord, each morning when we get up, we have a choice. We can live life through the lens of scarcity and fear, or we can be emboldened through your love. This evening, let this council make decisions, easy or difficult, emboldened with your love. And as city employees, residents, and visitors go out into the community, let them do so as well, out of being emboldened with your love. Because we know, in the end, it's only through you, with you, and in you that we can be eternally happy and be emboldened through your love. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to the meeting. And if I could ask you at this time to silence your electronics. There will be a point in the meeting for citizens' comments, and if you haven't already done so, and you'd like to speak to some item, if you can sign up with the acting city clerk over here, and you'll have three minutes for your comments. At this time, we have our consent agenda items, which are, there's two of them, and I will turn it to the council.
I move we accept the two consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the two consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, business items. Business item 2.1. At this time, I believe, I'll let the city attorney take.
Thank you, Mr. President. Business item 2.1 is first reading of ordinance number 1480-24, ordinance of the City Council of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, approving a small-scale future land use map amendment at the city's conference of plan, changing future land use classification from PSP public, semi-public, to MU mixed-use, and MU mixed-use, I apologize, to RU residential urban, and amending the city's official zoning map, changing the zoning designation from PUD planning unit of development and OP office professional to PUD planning unit of development for a portion of parcel 35-25-21-0010-069-00-00-20. Give me just a second.
Ellen is going to sing a little bit while we're waiting on them to find what they're looking for.
Come on, sing.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we might clear the room at that.
It's for a portion of the first parcel. And for parcel 35-25-21-0010-08500-0010, providing codification, separability, and effective date. Apologize, though. What was published is correct, and what's on the ordinance is correct, but what's on the printout's the outdated version of the heading.
All right. I guess we'll let, Todd, you have a short.
Yeah, just a brief introduction. This came as a planning report at the last city council meeting, of course, property located the southwest corner of Pretty Pond and Wire Road, property owned by Advent Health. Plan for a planning unit development comprised of two and three-story townhomes. There's a preliminary PUD master plan that's submitted as part of the plan that we went through and discussed at the last council meeting. There is not a buyer, builder currently. However, this is a planning unit development. We talked about a number of topics and elements as part of this preliminary development plan, and those have been built into conditions as part of the PUD ordinance. We're happy to go through those. Staff, city manager, city attorney, Mr. Joel Tool, talked about those conditions that we discussed at the, at the planning report meeting. Those had to do with tree preservation, the driveways into the development on both Pretty Pond and Wire Road and Dairy Road. Conditions that we'll look at as part of the final development plan. Once a builder is selected, we'll confirm that the right and left turn lanes are added. Talked about if there's an opportunity to even connect to Dairy Road, that that probably makes some sense, we'll try to accommodate that. So, yeah, I mean, if there's some questions, if you've had an opportunity to look at the ordinance, and specifically the conditions, we tried to, we worked again with the applicant's representative in tying those conditions of those topics in there. So, if there's any questions on those conditions, we're happy to bring those up or discuss them further.
Okay. I think I'll, I'll do, I'll open the public hearing first here, if there's any comments from the citizens first, and then we'll let the council discuss. So, this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anyone's signed up to speak to this item, does anybody wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And now, council, if you have questions for Todd, or comments.
So, the plan is for us to rezone it, and then they're going to put a bunch of town homes, two to three stories high?
Apartments. It's planned at this time with two and three-story apartments, correct?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of our most congested areas in the city. For me personally, I'm not super excited about this, but, because we haven't even gotten the traffic controlled in that area. And then, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, we talked a lot about that at both the site plan review committee and the planning commission. We're working on the final design engineering first of the roundabout that's planned at intersection of Pretty Pond and Wire Road. So, that would help out quite a bit, both in the levels of service of that intersection, which, right now, eastbound traffic coming from 301 to Wire Road, that gets backed up right now. The one thing that was specifically identified in the traffic study was a pretty lengthy right turn lane, so on Pretty Pond, there'd be a long turn lane right into the project that'll help get the trips off of Pretty Pond into the development. Again, we also talked about connecting to Dairy Road and left and right turn lanes on both Pretty Pond and Wire Road. The nice thing is if we have those three in and outs, entry and exit points, that'll help disperse the trips that are associated with this development. So, felt pretty comfortable about three ways in and out of the project. So, that's a part of the conditions that you'll see on the ordinance, as well as bike and pedestrian connections to Dairy Road, where we have an existing trail. So, people living in the development, working at the hospital around that area, not only can get in and out with your automobile, but also you could walk to work or bike to work, is how we're kind of comprehensively looking at. And again, just zooming out a little bit, part of what we're proposing to do with the hotspots, that whole area is a hotspots area location. I believe this week, we're trying to move forward, come up with some budget ideas that you'll be hearing from us with the updated budget request, to start designing, engineering some of these hotspot locations. So, we're meeting this week to meet with Kim Lee Horn to talk about the analysis of some of those hotspot priorities that will most likely be recommended by staff in this area, to talk about additional improvements that can be done, perhaps adding a duals left-bound, south-bound turn lane from Pretty Pond on 301 there.
On the roundabout, the intersection improvements of Pretty Pond and Wire should be completed prior to construction beginning on the site.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Well, I had concerns last week of the conceptual site plan, which I've been told only has about 1% chance of being what we actually see in the end, but I find that a little hard to believe in terms of the numbers of units provided in that zoning would permit up to, I think it's 238 units, and they're asking for 250, but, so 14 units an acre, they would, they would get up to that much. So, they're going to, the sale of the property to a developer, the goal will be to get as many units as possible, higher density as possible, and make the land more valuable, which in turn benefits the hospital, and then benefits the community. So, I mean, there's several ways of looking at it. But I'm concerned that those conditions that are in the agreement are going to be difficult to meet in terms of saving trees, having green space. Even if you change the number of floors on the buildings, you're going to have certain parking requirements. And then, again, on the north side, it's going to be apartments, and on the east side, it's going to be townhomes. So, what we're starting here will be continued at properties that are already zoned for those uses. So, my question is, what, what are we able to do if we approve the rezoning, when they come in with the site plan that we deem to be unacceptable?
From a unit standpoint, or tree preservation?
Well, you know, if, if they're not meeting the standards that we want there, what can we do?
Well, I think when we, generally what we do, we have a pre-application meeting. When a builder gets selected, we'll have that pre-application meeting. We would go over the ordinance, the PUD conditions, and the concept, conceptual plan that shows a mix of two and three-story. And then, we'll ask them, when we have the pre-app meeting, to have that tree survey. I think that, from a tree preservation standpoint, it's critical to have that tree survey and where the quality trees are. And then, I think it's a matter, the onus would be on the builder and their civil engineer to work to preserve as many of those trees as possible, not only around the perimeter, but probably the way in which the, the buildings are located, oriented on the property, to maximize that tree preservation. And, I mean, we have the ability in our codes and comprehensive plan to require, request them to maximize tree preservation. I think we try to come to an understanding on that, at that initial stage of meeting with the builder and their engineer. The, the, the traffic issues, we think we have the, the condition in there to allow us to, to look at the left and right turn lanes on the corridors, and, and if we can coordinate a connection to Dairy Road, again, we meet early on with the developer, builder, to talk about that topic as well. But then, yeah, I mean, a final development plan will be presented to staff. It goes to the planning commission, and you guys get, get another look at that, to review it.
It's, it's still our policy, then, with the, with the tree ordinance we have now, that they could, in lieu of saving trees, pay into a, a tree fund. Is that right?
There is a tree mitigation. We're always going to recommend, again, the tree preservation, and we're taking a staunch look at that right now, even meeting with developers, builders on-site, to, to look at tree preservation, so they know what a priority that is. And then, the second step is, we're going to recommend that they probably exceed the code minimum to ramp up, bump up the, the minimum tree landscaping buffering requirement, so it can have a better visual impact in the beginning of the project versus the alternative of just putting money into a tree mitigation fund. So, you know, we've done that on projects. You drive down Silverado Ranch Boulevard, where they planted on a 12, 15-foot tall oak trees, and it made quite a difference, so.
That's, okay. Do you have any idea when the revised tree ordinance will come before us, with some of those safeguards in it?
That is on the list. We can certainly.
S tracket.
What's that?
S tracket.
Making a note of it right now. And, and it's, it's on our list, and I think I mentioned before, Councilman Spina had recommended we look at Temple Terrace. I have a copy of that. I've reviewed it with it, shared some initial preliminary thoughts with a council member, Spina, and I think we can take some language that they did pretty well in Temple Terrace and use that. So, we can come back with that pretty, pretty soon.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. One, we had talked about, they're, they're going to add a lengthened right-hand turn lane into the project off of Pretty Pond Road. They're talking about left-hand, right-hand turn lanes in off of Wire Road as well. So, at the very least, there's two access points to the project, right?
Yep.
And.
And on Dairy Road, if it, if we can make.
And Dairy. And it might, yeah, it may not because of the grade. I don't know.
Yeah, we'd, if it works.
Right.
If it makes sense, yeah.
So, so with those two, that's going to help things, and I think in my own mind that, once we finally get a connection on Cossack, it'll relieve that intersection a little bit there. Not tremendously, but somewhat, you know? And some of the cars that are coming down Pretty Pond right now, and coming, and continuing on Pretty Pond to the west, will probably peel right and go up to Cossack to go into the shopping, I'm assuming. So, I, I think things will improve there. It is congested. They did a traffic study, though, and you feel comfortable with the traffic study that was performed?
Yeah, I, I mean.
And we had our, didn't we have our engineer look at that?
We had Kim Lee Horn look at it. Right now, I think that eastbound traffic flow from 301 is the hiccup there. And, right now, the study showed a lengthy right turn lane into development on Pretty Pond that addresses that, but these additional improvements will even make it better in addition to the roundabout, overall.
So, the staff feeling, and your staff's feeling, does, it's, the traffic issues are pretty well taken care of by the improvements we're asking them to be made?
We feel confident with it, and we discussed that with Kim Lee Horn as well, along with, of course, the applicant's traffic engineer.
I think it's twofold. It's the fact that we're doing the roundabout, which will be done before this project, and because this project will, roundabout will come and, and be built before a buyer ever finalizes plans for this, they are, even though the, the traffic study doesn't warrant it, are doing the double turn lane or extended turn lanes. I think it does warrant extended turn lanes, but the, the other ones off of Wire does not. But because they can't, we can't make them contribute realistically to the roundabout because there won't be a project here in time for that to happen, they're doing that instead. And then, I also want to address one of the things about the likelihood of the plan being the same, is I think the context was, what are the likelihood that this will be 100% the site plan? And that's probably zero, because there hasn't been a tree study. I think it was addressed at the planning report, that there, you know, swift much to us that final approval of whether the retention's big enough. So, it's going to change probably some, but I don't think it, I, what we're approving is, is that conceptual plan. If something else comes completely different, that's going to be a whole new process. And then, also, because it's a PUD, and there isn't a final site plan, that final site plan comes back before council again. It's not like a Euclidean zoning where it'll go to SPC and be done. A final master plan will come back before council with the changes based on the code that, in the conditions.
Agent, are you?
Yes, thank you.
The attorney.
Here.
If, you know, if there's 0%, which has been set at both meetings, of that site plan being presented back to us, that's fine. But the question I have is, the 17 acres will be zoned then for 14 units per acre, which comes up to 238 units. So, they will have the opportunity, through our land development codes, to develop it to that extent. The current tree ordinance we have provides for them to put money, chop trees down, and put money into a tree mitigation fund. So, everything we're talking about preserving and preventing can happen, whether we want it to or not. By the time it comes to us, it'll be done.
Well, no, the final site plan would still have to be approved by you before any construction happens. Now, if you're changing the tree ordinance, and, and I haven't looked at how the tree ordinance will impact this particular project, because we don't have a tree survey, I mean, I was mistaken. I thought it was basically a dead orange grove with scrubber growing in between it, but we rode by there, and there, there are some trees in there that need to probably be addressed. And that's why we, you know, clarify one of the conditions, that they'll meet, they'll get a tree survey and meet all the requirements of the city ordinances and land development code with regards to that. You're saying that the zoning of 14 units an acre would already be, would be guaranteed to them because of the other ordinances in the land development code, you mean?
Right now, it's zoned PUD and OP. So, I don't know exactly how that's different as a PUD from the, the current, the PUD that would make it just residential. But my concern is that the, the, the more, the value of that property increases with the more units they can put on it. And that's what developers look for. So, how do we, and I don't want to limit what they're entitled to, but we have other conditions that they have to meet. And getting eight apartment buildings on that 17 acres will not do it.
Now, I don't know that I understand. You're saying with the conditions, they won't be able to put those number of apartment units?
If they, if they preserve trees and have open space and do things like that, they won't be able to get eight buildings on that property, not, eight buildings plus a parking.
There's a potential, depending on where the trees are, how many trees there are, and what our ordinance says about that, there's a potential they not, they not get the same number of units. There's a potential they get less, but by passing this, there's a max of what they can get, and they have to meet the conditions. So, they can still sell the property of, look, this is what you can do based on these conditions. And then, it'll be during the planning process of that particular project, of what the actual final looks like. I mean, it'll be, I would assume it would be very similar to what we're approving, otherwise they're going to have to start from scratch. But, yeah, there's a likelihood they're not going to get the 200, whatever units it is, because the ponds may need to be bigger. The, you know, the mitigation of the trees may lose some space. So, I think that's, I think that's what is meant by, is this going to be the site plan? And it won't be any more than that, but I think it'll be, I personally think it'll probably be a little less than that.
Yeah, so if it's a, right now, I think it's just, just on top of 14 units per acre.
More than 14.
Yeah, just on top of that, but they, they couldn't go any more with that.
Well, they can't go over 238, according to my map.
I think it's 250.
52 is the, what's shown on the site plan.
52 wasn't. It's shown on the site plan, but 14 times 17 is 238.
Where is the 14 coming from?
Units per, uh, units per acre, and it's 17 acres. So, if you multiply 14 by 17, then you get 238 on there.
But the 14 units an acre is not for this property, because it was a PUD prior to that change. It's 20 is the maximum.
That's, I.
Yeah, so.
Okay, all right.
Entitlements now are, would be for this property, technically 20. I think they're at 14.18 or something?
Yeah, right above 14 units.
What is it?
13, 23.
14.3 something, the way it's designed today.
What would the difference be if it was PUD and OP? What's the OP?
Well, again, you're going to have a max under the, the MU, which is the future land use, which would be 20 units per acre. But R4, of course, we've dropped to 14, but again, they've got the PUD, so, as we discussed.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think, you know, there was a previous, a potential buyer before that presented us. I mean, there was a lot of conversations going back a few years on this, even to the city. I know nothing had gone totally through yet, but I think it was even higher density, wasn't it, on that previous entity?
Yeah, I think we had, like, three-story apartments that were proposed, so that unit number count has come down from that original plan.
Right. And, but I do, I do think that one of the most important things is, and this, like, to allay your concerns, is those, what was brought to us by the representative last meeting, that those turning lanes, both left and right, and a significant turning lane too, not just one of those little two-car things, I think is real important. And, and, and again, the representative was, you know, sounded like that was how they were going to present it to any potential buyers, too. And I think that's, we need to definitely stick with that, because that's going to make a big difference. Cossack Road, when that goes through, I think it will eventually help, because everyone will find their way to make, so, you know, to alleviate the traffic somewhat. And for Councilman Spina's concerns, I think his was on, we still have another look at the final site plan. I think the representative was here, I believe.
Yes, they are.
And, and hearing our concerns is what, and a potential buyer, what we're kind of looking for, and, you know, where it will be, tree ordinance and other things like So, like I said, I think, you know, there's been conversations on this before already, and they've sort of led down that path of, you know, that was going to be okay, more or less. And I don't know if we want to completely change that around, so. I think the, the, the roads are very important, the turning lane things. And again, as I've already previously stated, the representative made it sound like that was going to be a big concern to any potential buyer, so.
Can I address that just briefly?
Pardon me?
So, can I address that part?
Yeah.
Briefly about the potential buyers? So, what would be passed today if approved is, is the ordinance, and it lays out those conditions that were, were brought before you at the planning report, have been modified to, to include a little more language about the, the tree survey and that?
That will be.
But the, the rest of them, you know, the turn lanes, and even describing the number of feet the turn lane will be, is in the ordinance, which will be public record, and anybody that buys a property is going to be on notice that this is what's going to be required.
Okay, so it will be in the ordinance.
Yeah, they're agreeing to it through these conditions today.
Okay.
They're not required to, based on the traffic study, but they will be after, if we approve this.
Right, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I was kind of getting at, so. And Mayor, the planning commission, was there any thoughts, concerns? Can you kind of brief us on that real quick?
No, I, the planning commission came, we didn't have any nay votes on this one. We did have a lot of conversation on the same type of things that we talked about. And, and obviously, we don't want 20 units per acre there. I think that's what it came down to for us, so.
Okay. But, but I think Councilman Spina's concerns are valid, because what everybody's saying they would like to see, I mean, what would potentially be legally allowed, you know, I get it, so I totally agree with that. But as long as we have another, you know, what do you call, bite at the apple to kind of help along those lines, then I think we're, we'll be all right.
And again, the whole premise of staff being okay with and supporting the idea of a PUD was with the straight zoning, we, we knew we weren't going to get those turn lanes. And we feel like the traffic is probably the priority issue here.
Oh, I think so, too.
Getting those turn lanes in, and through the PUD, we have that opportunity to do so. And then, yeah, I mean, we're going to push hard, wherever that builder is, to talk, talk about those trees and maximize the preservation. We're, we're committing to that, and trying to do the best job we can on that with all the new projects coming through now, because we know it's important.
Okay, and with the city attorney reinforcing the fact that it's in what we'll be voting on tonight, too. Does anybody have any other comments, concerns? Otherwise, I'll entertain a mo- Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
And just, Mr. President, and I think staff has reviewed this. I think that the city attorney's put enough language in here that helps alleviate some of the issues that we've brought up here as best we can. So I would move that we approve this item.
I have a motion. Hey, I'm going to defer to the city attorney just because that's never happened to me before, so exactly what am I doing at this point?
If, Mr. President, if you intend to second the motion, you can pass the gavel, designate President Protemp in a sense, and make a motion, or it can, if you're not inclined to make a motion and we only hear a second, it would die.
So I can make, I thought a president wasn't allowed to make motions or seconds.
If you pass, if you pass the president position to one of the other council members, you could.
In order to make a second.
Right.
Okay, is there some kind of formality to this, or I'm just handing the gavel to him?
Just state on the record that your, the councilman Proctor, as vice president, is going to take over as president for this.
Okay, at this time, the vice president of council will, will take over the meeting. And I, I will second the motion. Does he carry on from there?
Through this, through this.
Okay, do this item.
Through this item.
So we have a second and a motion.
We have someone, one of the applicant representatives that'd like to speak before you do your vote, if that's possible still.
Yeah, after, I mean, after a motion and a second, there can be more discussion. It's up to council whether you want to allow comment from the applicant, but I would probably encourage it at this point before a vote.
Come, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joel Two, and I'm a land use consultant for Advent Health. I spoke and of course helped present two weeks ago. I just wanted to say on behalf of the hospital to reiterate really what we covered two weeks ago. I mean, we vetted this, we thought, in really great detail. The hospital's been working on this over a year. We had unanimous support from the Planning Commission. And I think the hospital, in all fairness, has really been over backwards to agree to things that are actually beyond what your code required, things that are well beyond what the approved traffic study required. And the hospital fully understands that when they get a buyer, they're going to give the buyer that ordinance, they're going to give the buyer those zoning conditions, they're going to make it abundantly clear to that buyer that they have to come back to you. They've got to come to the Planning Commission and to you, and they have to demonstrate a site plan that meets all of those conditions. And all of those conditions include getting you comfortable, that they're handling your tree preservation, the ordinance, the way you need it handled, they're handling the architecture the way you need it handled, they're handling the access, and they're handling the traffic the way you want it handled. So with all respect, I'm a little bit confused after a year of working on this, and particularly after what we thought was unanimous vote two weeks ago to move it forward, where we discussed all these conditions. I'm afraid the hospital will be really surprised, and unanimous of those that were present two weeks ago. I think they'd be very surprised if this can't move forward, because what they're trying to do is simply get the land conceptually entitled. We do believe, they spent a lot of money on due diligence engineering with Clearview Land Design. We do believe that site plan is buildable, subject to, as I said last time, subject to the size of those retention ponds, subject to possibly moving the configuration or the shape of buildings to help avoid tree impacts, and to be able to handle the third access point on Dairy Road, if that can be achieved, given the topo and the short distance that they have from the intersection. So what they really ask you, if you can possibly see fit, is they just want you to give them the chance to take this back to market with a known maximum cap on zoning and a pretty, pretty accurate site plan, we believe. And if that buyer then sits down with you and they can't get two fifty-two, they can only get two thirty-eight or two twenty-one, then that's where they are, and they'll either close or they won't. But from our experience, if we can't get it zoned with those basic conditions, we really are in an adverse situation in the marketplace, particularly now. So that's why, you know, we're imploring you to please move this forward, because I think in all fairness, you are completely protected. You have to approve the site plan. If the site plan doesn't meet all these conditions, don't approve it. You have to approve the architectural renderings. If you're not happy with those and they don't comport, don't approve it. So you're not surrendering any control, you're not surrendering any power, you're simply giving one of your largest, most important employers and partners in your community the opportunity to liquidate an asset where those funds are going to stay here in your community for capital improvements to that hospital. That was the plan under contract last time, and they had to put those off when that contract fell through it. So this is simply an opportunity to convert a non-performing asset, to give them funds that can be used for capital improvements in your local hospital. And I don't think we're asking the city to give up control over anything that you have control over as we sit here today. So I understand you've got to do what you want to do, but we would greatly appreciate if you can possibly see fit to support this, to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I was not here at the last meeting, but anyway, we have a sec, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against it, say nay. Nay.
Your tie vote, that's.
No, that fails.
It fails.
You don't get a vote.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Motion of approval fails.
Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question? Does the applicant have the right to ask it to be considered when we have a full complement of council members?
Yes.
So I think that would be the hospital's request, would be for it to be brought back on first reading when we have a full complement since we have an absent member.
At this point, it's on the agenda for approval. There was a motion made to approve it, and it died, so we're, we're kind of back at square one before the first reading. I mean, if there's things that council wishes to change with the conditions that can be addressed with staff and with the applicant and bring it back, or because the potential of it being a different vote, sheerly because we're missing a council member, that would be enough to allow the applicant to bring it again.
I'd be happy to look at it. If we get a site plan that is, at two meetings in a row, I've been told there's zero percent chance that that's what the site plan will look like. And then I'm told this is basically what we're going to, what it'll look like in terms of the density issues. If I can see a site plan that shows a more reasonable or realistic look at how that property will be developed in concept, then I, I would look at it differently. But I think that site plan in that packet does not do it for me. And twice I've been said, well, there's zero, zero percent chance that'll be that, but you say it won't, so.
May I respond to that, with your permission? When we say there's zero percent chance that that exact plan will be there, please understand that could mean that the pond is five feet larger one direction. That could mean that you have ten parking spaces less or more, or that can mean that you have to rotate simply one building to avoid some trees. Then your site plan has changed. But to say that, that this plan, as Mr. Maggard pointed out, this, what's being approved as a site plan, that they're going to have to come in with something that's materially consistent with that concept. And the, the position the hospital's being put in is it's really a chicken and an egg. It makes absolutely zero sense to hire an architect and engineer to go design a site plan when you don't have a buyer developer, because they're not going to build your plan. And, and so we are required to have a PUD to have at least a preliminary concept planned. Now, they spent several thousand dollars with civil engineering and planning at Clearview Land Design to produce what you have by an engineer and a planner who told them that subject to the drainage requirements, that that project is buildable. So they in good faith did generate a plan. I can understand that any plan can always be made better, and I think that's the purpose of trying to move forward so that you, that's why we said from the beginning that we were happy to give you full site plan control, full architectural control, so that you could be comfortable that what you get back, you still have control over. But if, if we can get approval at this stage, that, that buyer will come do exactly what you're asking for. They then will spend many more thousands of dollars on tweaking that plan and confirming exactly what they can do, working it through with you and staff to satisfy your concern. So we can get where you want to go, we have to get where you want to go to have ultimate approval, but we need to get out of the box on stage one to even produce that person that can come in and engage in that process. And, you know, I thought we'd explained that was what the concept was, that we weren't entirely crazy, that there's a logical business reason why they're trying to do it the way they are. So I respect your thought, but I do believe we can absolutely get you where you need to be and where you want to be. But we can't do it now without the actual developer builder who has the exact product. Otherwise, we're just wasting, they may as well just be throwing that money down the sewer, because it's a complete waste of money to design a project when there's not the person to, to build it. And yet, if we can't get it zoned and provide that developer, and many of you in the real estate business understand this, if we can't give them some basic assurance that they have a basic zoning opportunity up to a certain number with specific conditions in front of them, they can decide pretty quickly whether they can meet your conditions and what density they can achieve. So, I mean, what, what we're doing is actually very logical and very customary in the real estate process. So anyway, that's all I have to say. I apologize for taking more time, but obviously, I've got an obligation to the hospital to try to get this to move forward. And this is going to be quite a shock.
Okay, and for the record, council president has reassumed council meeting duties, and just to reiterate, city attorney, what, what would be the procedure for bringing it back to us? It wouldn't come as a first reading again like this, it would come as a whole new?
It would come as a first reading again if, if the makeup of council has changed, so if we have all five council members, we could bring it as is, or if we make tweaks to it. I mean, I agree with Mr. Two and what he's, what he's saying in that it doesn't make sense for somebody to site plan an exact plan not knowing, because the builder's going to want to change it. So what, I, I want to clarify my statement too about the zero percent is, that's an answer to the question of, is this the exact plan? And, and I think that, that's taken out of context a little bit, because the exact plan, yeah, it's probably going to change a little bit, but it's essentially, I mean, we've, we've spelled out in the conditions and attached the site plan to the ordinance, the only way it's going to change is, it's going to be based on the tree mitigation and whether there's a, an exit to the, it'd be the west onto Dairy or, you know, ingress and egress that way, and whether the ponds are sufficient based on Swift Mode's approval. But nobody's going to go through that process until they're the builder. What the hospital had asked us to do is move it forward with all the conditions that we would want, and then tweak the site plan when they have a buyer, which is customary. I mean, it hasn't happened here a lot, but it, it happens all over the state all the time, so. If there's a direction specifically about the conditions that would appease council, I'd be happy to hear them now, because I anticipate the applicant wanting to bring it forward based on Mr. Two's comments.
Right, and I understand. So the, the concept that we were shown is basically they're showing a potential buyer, this is potentially what could happen here, and they're showing us this is potentially what could happen here. It's not a set in stone thing by any means, so most likely, it's going to be some, some difference. What you're asking for is there, is there something that council would like to see addressed before it's brought back to us? And thank you for steering us through this. By the way, this is like the first time it's ever happened that I know of, so bear, thanks for bearing with it. Now you know why they have odd number of members on councils and things, so that we don't end up with these kind of situations, but it happens and, and we have to deal with it. So thank you, Matt, for kind of steering us through that. So at this time, I think what the city attorney is looking for is if there's anything specific, and I, I know Councilman Spina has really kind of explained that the tree ordinance is one for sure, and then.
This, this site plan that I'm looking at shows eight units, eight apartment buildings with a complete thread of parking, which is necessary, of course, throughout the whole site plan. There is a small pet park, there's another area to the east, I guess, near the retention area, he said, I don't know what it is. It's got parking around it. There is the clubhouse and all that, that's fine. But having been out on the site, and the, the property along the, the low property alongside Wire Road is a good place, obviously, it's low and it's basically treeless right now. But what I'm worried about is we have a habit of letting people come in and build a project, and they come in and they cut down all the trees, and then they build all the houses or apartments, and then they plant, create myrtles or something and put money in a mitigation fund. And the, this site is hilly, a slight hill, and it, it destroys the context of the, the natural layout, and it changes the complexion of that whole area. And type of development we've seen, the, the rapid pace of development we've seen, you can look across the street and look at Gore's Dairy and see what that is, that this site, to me, and I haven't been here for some of the projects, I don't want to see us continue in that vein. I want to see us maintain character and some of the natural attributes of the property. And I don't think that's too much to ask a developer. And if it costs him a couple units or her, then so be it. I think their property is more valuable if it maintains some of those qualities and attributes. So that's what I want to see. If they can bring me a site plan that shows a little bit more clarity in, in how they'll preserve some of the trees, we can go out there, have somebody mark the trees as soon as possible, and then I, I can, I can go with it. I'm concerned about the traffic, but I can live with the turn lanes and the roundabout and different things. But I think that we're changing the character of our community, and we have to start holding our ground on how we want things to look. And people do it all the time. They maintain, they are trees and thing, and white, open spaces and projects.
And if I may, Councilman, by you retaining site plan control in this express condition that's going to be part of this ordinance, you have that power to do exactly what you just articulated when the proposed buyer developer comes in with that refined plan. You can say, I think you're taking out too many trees, and you need to leave these, and by the way, rather than paying in the mitigation fund, you need to plant some larger trees in these locations on that site plan. You have the ability to basically customize and fashion that site plan with them. So why I'm at a little bit of a loss is why you think that has to be done now, when there's not even a buyer developer to do that with you, as opposed to you getting comfortable that you can do that when they come into you, because you are retaining that legal control in the conditions.
They're talking about how densities can actually be higher, and that.
Wait a minute, who's saying density?
Our staff is. They're saying that.
No, our maximum is, let's explain that. The residential urban land use category that you have would allow twenty units an acre, but the hospital is voluntarily agreeing to limit theirs to the two hundred and fifty-two maximum, which is barely over fourteen. So if the PUD is approved, they can't do twenty. They could do twenty without a PUD control. So they are voluntarily reducing it by over five units per acre with the PUD.
That's correct.
So we have.
But also the turn lanes are voluntary too.
If it's R four, they're limited to fourteen units per acre.
At R4, but there's 20 units...
And if it's a PUD, they can go up to 20.
Right.
Well, in this PUD, we can't go to 20 because it is capping us at 252 units, which is just a little bit over 14.
If this wasn't approved, what they could do with that parcel is 20, yes.
And let me jump in real quick.
With this approved, they're locked in at the 14.38, whatever.
Yeah, let me just jump in real quick because I don't have it up my computer. In the ordinance, it states the maximum along with the turn lane state...
252 units.
States the maximum of 252, which is 14.8 or whatever comes out to units per acre.
It's like 14.5.
Okay, that's the max they could do no matter what.
That's the max.
And then, Councilman Spina, we will never see the exact site plan until somebody has bought the land and is gonna do the site plan.
I understand that.
So it's gonna be... I think it's gonna be hard for us to say, "Well, we want to make sure we save that tree." You know, that's the only problem with that is I think it'll be kind of hard. I agree with what you're talking about, though. We need to, you know, try to do all that that we can, but we won't see an exact site plan that we can say, "Hey, this building's here. No, I want that tree to stay."
I think... I'm not sure how we would tie this into the record, but I'll state it for the record. Once a builder is selected and we have that pre-application meeting and we have that discussion with them, we're not talking with anyone, your civil engineer or anyone, until we see a conceptual plan that shows the trees on the property. And before we even go past that pre-application meeting, kind of similar to what we've done with conditional uses and dealing with height for apartments, we could share a preliminary final development plan that shows the trees and where, conceptually, the buildings would be. So we have an idea, I think, of the comments, concerns that have been brought up. And we could have that, those meetings, one-on-one with the city manager and you as council to get an opinion on how you feel, if you're comfortable with the maximizing of the tree preservation that staff has had with the applicant and their civil engineer at that point. And if you're not, then we'll go back and tell the applicants, engineer, that, that they need to sharpen their pencil and make some changes, whatever those might be.
If I could just add, it says approval of the request, subject to the conditions listed below. There's some other language. Item one, the maximum number of multifamily units shall be 252. So in the ordinance, it states the max units is 252. It cannot go higher.
I guess that's why I'm confused as well because we took your comments and added specific language about the trees. I mean, until there's a builder, I don't think we're gonna get a site plan. I think I just... I think your concerns about the trees can... Or still can be controlled and done through this ordinance, if that's the only concern.
My concerns about the whole character of it, I want to make sure that some of the slope is protected. I want to make sure that when they move in there, when they move in there, it doesn't look like the project at Eighth Street did, that had all those trees on it, and then you drove by before the builder came and every tree was gone.
I don't know what project you're talking about.
The townhomes on Eighth Street. And the same thing happened to the properties up on Pretty Pond and 301.
Well, I mean, this ordinance specifically addresses that they'll get a tree survey and follow our tree preservation and mitigation ordinance. I don't know if that needs to be addressed.
I'll get with staff then, and we'll talk about maybe fast-tracking our tree ordinance to make sure we have stronger tree regulations in place, and this will come back and...
Mr. President, if I could... And I just view this as giving us more control over the project personally because not only do we look at the site plan again, we're talking about tree mitigation, and we're also talking about architectural control and elevation, too, which we don't necessarily have, I don't think, as it's owned currently, right?
Right.
So to me, it gives us a little more control. And I think Councilman Spina is right. We need to be more cognizant of protecting trees. The first thing that are on site, because the first thing that a project that is called the Oaks does is knock every live oak down on the property. So, you know, I think that we need to say, "No, that's not, you know, this site plan isn't good." And I just viewed this as a vehicle to allow us to do that. Not only that, but a potential buyer coming in, they're gonna have a product mix that they're used to building, and they will... It'll be different. It will be different. And if they don't think they can live by the rules that we've kind of established for their development, then they're gonna pass on it and go do something else.
Yeah, I'll point you to the apartments that are immediately to the south of this, on that same side of the street, and I feel like that project came out very well. We did preserve some of the grades there. There was some cutting, but we did work with the grades there, and certainly, there's trees that came out where the parking, the buildings are. But if you remember, when we took that project through on both the north or the southwest corner and the northeast corners, we essentially had them plant a forest of trees. Had really changed the character and how that looked. There was a lot of trees that came down, but if you drive by and look at that, the amount of tree planting that we did, you know, again, you gotta look at each site independently, but I think that came out really well, and we dealt with some of those same similar issues that I think we were pretty successful in achieving on that property.
Let me ask you a quick question. So in, as Mr. Two stated, the Advent Health has put in... They commissioned to do that conceptual drawing there. Do you know, and maybe you probably don't know this, but the trees that are represented on the conceptual drawing, are they kind of accurate to what's there, or is it just kind of thrown on there to show that we could still have some trees? Or do you even know?
My understanding is they did not have the actual tree survey.
Okay.
So they don't know that.
Okay.
But I will tell you this, if you look at the conditions, our required parking ratio, which is consistent with what you've done, is 1.5 spaces per unit for the apartments. This site plan is substantially overparked. There are two spaces per unit. So a lot of this asphalt does not have to be there in order to still meet the parking. Any apartment buyer also, as you know, has the ability to also do structured parking. I mean, there are a lot of things that could be done to alter the site plan. So in all likelihood, they're gonna have a site plan now that they see these conditions, and they're gonna be clearly told they've got to satisfy you on the trees, they're gonna make an effort to have less asphalt and move buildings. It just makes no sense for us to try to make that decision for someone when we can't possibly guess how they're going to do it. So that's why it is a chicken and egg problem, but it's really not a problem because you retain control over all those issues. You retain control over the topo, the site grading, the site plan, the architectural, the aspects, the access, and the trees. You're not giving up any of that control, but at least it gives us a basic template of a maximum density with these 13 or 14 conditions that someone can get a... You can read those conditions and get a pretty good handle on what the city is concerned about, that they need to come in and deal with. And that's all we're asking. And I don't... I'd hate to see Advent punished because of the transgressions of the others that came before them. It's almost like it's being assumed that their property is going to be done the same as others that got built. And I don't think that's fair when they're voluntarily surrendering that continuing control to you with the site plan and agreeing to build turn lanes. Our traffic study was very clear, approved by Kimberly-Horn, your consultant, that all we are required to build is one right turn lane in. They have volunteered to build all these other left and right turn lanes that they're not obligated to do. So it's almost like no good deed goes unpunished. I mean, they've gone overboard to try to meet those control issues and give themselves a position to sell it. Otherwise, they're simply not gonna be able to market it.
All right. So at this point, the initial ordinance failed, and Councilman Spina is going to address concerns to city manager and city attorney. That's where we're at right now, right? And then possibly Councilman Proctor, too.
Yeah, I will get with Billy, but my major concern is the traffic. It's... I mean, it's terrible there.
Okay, so...
But we don't... I mean...
Yeah. So at this point, that's where we need to be moving forward, to move forward, right? So do I anticipate this comes back if provided concerns are laid at the next scheduled council meeting, or...
I would assume so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Again, thanks to the city attorney. Thanks for all your comments and for the... And thank you, Mr. Two. And for the audience, you know, a lot of times, it's city council, "I can't believe they just did whatever." You know, we hear about that. But so tell your neighbors how much discussion went into one little thing here, so... All right. And thank you, council, again, for your comments. And so we will move on to 2.2, and I'll again turn it over to the city attorney.
Point two is the first reading of resolution number 82424, a resolution of the city council of the city of Zephroels, Florida pursuant to section 196.1978 sub 30, Florida statutes electing not to exempt property under section 196.19783 sub D1A, Florida statutes commonly known as the live local property tax exemption.
Okay. And this is also a public hearing, and I will open a public hearing at this time. Has anyone signed up to speak to this? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn to council for questions or comments, or city manager if he wants to.
I could read the memo, tax exemption that's permitted through the statute.
Well, I mean, is it long?
What's that?
Is it long?
A little bit. So essentially, what it is, is any... State statutes allow us to exempt credits for any live local projects that are charging 80 to 120% of the AMI. Anything under that, the affordable housing, anything under 80% of the AMI, they can still be tax exempt.
Okay.
Kind of the gist of it.
Yeah. And of course, this is worn out. Pasco County kind of got the ball rolling on this, and there's been significant talk amongst council and all parties on this particular item leading up to this. So if there's no questions or concerns, I'll...
I will, just for the record, this will have to come up each year, and to qualify, the Tampa Bay area has to have what is considered, based on the Schimberg annual report, a surplus of affordable and available units in the Tampa-St. Petersburg Clearwater Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is Upper Hills, is located currently as for those households that meet the income criteria for the 80 to 120 tax exemption. Currently, it's just over 3,900 units in excess. So each year, they'll have to look at that report and bring it back before council.
Okay.
Let me just ask a question on that, because I know that the way the live local worked, that there was a tax exemption portion of it. That's what this is talking, is addressing, right? A property tax exemption portion.
Right.
And what we're doing here is opting out of exactly what?
Not giving the tax exemption to the developer if they charge rents of 80 to 120, you know, anywhere between 80% or above.
80% or below, we keep...
They still get the taxes.
Right.
It's 80 to 120% AMI.
And I think that what concerned me on that always is the developer's not gonna necessarily pass the savings on to the renter for something like that.
And I don't think... I mean, let me word this politically correct. In a little bit of time since this has been implemented, what we've seen as a land use attorney network is exactly that. The 80 to 120 is not exactly affordable housing. Most of them are on the higher side of that, and they're taking the tax incentive and putting it in their pocket. They're not passing that on because of the demand's so high.
Right.
80 and below is done to incentivize people to give lower income rent and provide affordable housing. But 80 to 120, I mean, especially that really 90 to 120 area, is not affordable and...
And that exemption could go on for a significant length of time, too. Is that correct?
30 years?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we're on the right track.
And we're incorporated within the Tampa Bay area.
Right.
So numbers change drastically in Hillsborough, Pinellas County. That could impact us and how we...
Right. So, yes, for the AMI calculation, we are in that Tampa Bay area market as far as what AMI applies to us.
Okay.
I didn't move to approve this item.
Second.
Have you... I'm sorry, did you do the public hearing?
I already did a public hearing, yes. Okay. I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 824-24 on the first reading. All in favor, just signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And now, airport manager report. Nathan's been waiting very patiently.
Yeah, just waiting. Good evening, Nathan Coleman, Airport Director, City of Zephroels. I'll try to make this quick. All right, so our current projects, right... All right, can you go to the next slide when you're ready?
Up there?
Does it work? All right, there we go. So the current projects right now underway, these are all funded at the top. Runway 0119 Rehab, $4,510,000. We are about $1.4 million short. I'm going to DOT in July to look at getting that additional funding. And then, of course, the two tenant box hangers, taxiway F Design, Terminal FBO. I'll kind of go through it quick. The five-year capital improvement plan, sixth half, realignment, design and construct, two 10-unit box hangers relying South Avenue Phase One, South Avenue Phase Two, airport master plan update, design and construct taxiway G. That, these are subject to change. These are just basically placeholders in the JSON, so we got funding there, program, but hadn't been assigned yet. And each year I sit with DOT, we decide that a project's gonna be moved forward to have its time clock on it, and then if we decide to move forward, they'll program the money if they have it, or we push it out. So all, any of these projects can be pushed out. All right. This... All right, the next... This is basically the project cost versus the allocated funds. That's how they're listed there. Can be somewhat confusing. Currently, we have two box hangers at different sizes, 3,600 square foot and then 6,384 square foot. And then the... With the terminal, with the FBO and Foxtrot and the box hangers as it is, we're $4,392,800 shy. I recommend we do the two box hangers at 84 by 76, which is a $368,000 difference, bringing the total shortage to $4,761,200.
Going the wrong way, Nathan. You went up... No, I'm just messing with you.
Right. But if we look at the cost versus you got the box hangers, you got $2,93,000 for a 6,300 square footer, and you have $1,725,000. And to really get the target that we're after was the bigger aircraft.
And that's what these are for, a larger...
Yes.
Is it like a... It would be a jet aircraft?
That's what we're looking for.
It'll be a better revenue stream.
Right. Yeah, better revenue producer. As we get farther in here, I'll show you on these next slides. So when I went to DOT, and I've asked DOT Mr. Raymond Clark, the representative there, he has recommended that we do what I have first choice or first phase, which would be build the two big ones, build taxiway Foxtrot, which is 6,409, and then come back and program the FBO terminal in the fiscal year '27, '28. It's not guaranteed that we would get that, but, I mean, we've gotten a lot of money through DOT, roughly nearly $50 million in the last 10 years. So I foresee that happening. I have noted on there the FAA bill money. We're working with FAA. We're trying to secure some bill money funds, but we're working through negotiations with Skydive City. So I'm not sure if that money's available. If that money comes available, we can get 1.3 million of that right away, which we could put into doing taxiway Foxtrot, but that has to be approved, and I got it listed under safety. So I... listed under safety. So I've been working with them as well, trying to get that done. But we haven't got the funds released because we're working through negotiations with Skydive City for the RV part. All right. I already explained the bottom of it. Runway 119 rehab, that's a 1.4 million needed. This is just picture of the proposed terminal. These are the two box hangers that I mentioned earlier. Shows the, a citation on your left and my right. Yeah. And then King Air the other way. This is a proposed build out of the, that box hanger area. I don't know if this, does this have a pointer on it?
Yes.
I'm not sure which one it is. All right.
For a second there.
Technically smart. Not that smart anyways. So anyways, so the approach to runway five on my right would be your left. There's the two, where the two box hangers would sit. Taxiway Foxtrot is immediately to the south, and that would connect the current taxiway B to the approach runway five and leading into Alpha, so there's no runway crossing.
Are they the two buildings on the bottom there, the light blue buildings at the very bottom?
There.
Where's it at?
Oh, and I went too far. I thought I had it. So for the audience, this is.
Yeah, okay.
The two.
All right. That's what I was asking.
That's a two bit.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, that right there, this is the two box hangers. This is Foxtrot.
Taxiway F.
Taxiway F. And this is the airport layout plan. This is part of the JSE. As you see, this is what was proposed on our current AOP in 2014, which is the FAA approved. So if we want to build the airport out, this had showed as a possible another FBO. This is a little, real long-term range plan. This would change the dynamics of, you know, the airport. But I guess I skipped the. So anyways, we have a master plan planned in the five-year capital improvement plan. That would be a time we would get city council input. We would get the citizens' input of what direction we want to go. And that's really where we'll address these concerns. But it's programmed, so if we want to grow that way, we can. If not, we decide what we want in the master plan, and we push it out. And that's it. If I have any, you have any questions?
Okay. Well, just, so you're kind of proposing the two big, bigger box hangers, and then a taxiway. So that's revenue generating and safety, those two things right there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the FBO, which we all saw the renderings, and we got really excited about and all that, that's kind of like the thing we would like to see. But I think revenue generating and safety should be your priorities. And so I agree with you on that. And, you know, although I'd love to have the money to do the FBO and do everything all at the same time, I think you're on the right track. Go ahead.
So you're recommending then, right, that we do the box hangers and do them larger? And then the terminal building, which we need as well. But we just put that out a couple of years and get additional funding from FDOT.
Correct.
And that'll make up your deficit that you have right now.
Correct.
In these projects. You don't have operating. It's just in these projects.
Correct. Now, with the FBO, when I program that, any FBO will be a 50/50. So it'll end up costing us $2.5 million, but it's still $2,200,000 less than the $4 million that we would have to come up with.
Right. So, couple of things. One, if we go this direction, which I don't know that we have a choice unless we come up with $4.5 million to do the entire project. It was state appropriation dollars. So we'll have to go back to the state. We've talked with Secretary Gwynn of DOT. He proposed some language that we can massage. But we'll have to go back to the state and ask for them to reappropriate the funds with the language changed. And we'll explain to them, because of economic reasons and costs, we're not able to build the entire project. Sounds like we're going to be working on taxiway Foxtrot and the two box hangers, and lay out the plan of how we get to the FBO being constructed, so that the entire project will be built, just not on the timeline of the appropriation. And so we'll have to change that language. One question I do have, Nathan, I'm sorry I didn't ask this before. If the box hangers come in under budget, can we make them larger than what they currently are?
We cannot. I'd have to ask the engineer, like, they're out, all these projects are actually designed like 90%. We're just trying to get to the exact direction of where we're going and the funding, and then we're ready to execute. The 119 project is done. I'm just going in July to get that money to execute that. And then with these, it's, it's there. The FBO is at 90%. Well, we'll have that ready, so when we come back to actually execute that, you know, there's probably be some changes, and possibly cost change, because when these estimates were done, these were good estimates. I mean, now it's like, the inflation is just unreal. So.
We haven't, we haven't gone to bid on these at all.
We have not gone out to bid yet, no.
No, that's, that's where.
These, the numbers that you see in front of you are the, that were presented to you, those are engineers' estimates.
Okay.
So we still have to go out to bid. Forget somebody who's hungry, you know, maybe someone has some lower overhead, the numbers could come in lower.
Yeah, we're hoping this is like worst case scenario.
Yeah. I'm hoping that the engineers are underpromising and overdeliver. We'll see. But, but we have, I don't think we're going to make up $4.5 million. So that's why we have to bring it to you.
Every dollar helps. Councilman Proctor?
Yep. I have just one question for you, Nathan. It says the grant expires on 6/30/2026. Which grant is that?
That's the appropriations grants. That's all the.
And that's what we're using, we're using this money for these projects?
Yes.
I think that's what.
And that's what he was talking about.
City manager addressed that, that I'll have to reapply more or less with different language.
Yeah, ask for, I think they call it a revert, reappropriation.
So we won't lose it?
Correct. Yeah. I don't think, I don't think we're going to lose it. We just have to ask for them to change the language.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you were talking.
That's fine. So what the appropriations request was to build a FBO, Foxtrot, taxiway Foxtrot, and two box hangers. We were very specific. Unfortunately, in these appropriation requests, you need to be as vague as you possibly can. So we've learned that. And what it should have said was a terminal, you know, taxiway, and possibly two box hangers. And we could have killed the box hangers. So we're, it's no one's fault. I mean, you're told to be specific, and then you're told to be vague. So we just need to massage the language, take it back to the state, ask for them to reapprove it, because there is no dollar implication. The other question, the other part is, is we can ask for an appropriation for the terminal. We'll talk through that and see how that impacts us with the local DOT. But that is, that's another option that we have, is we ask for a reappropriation for these funds, and then we ask for additional funding for the terminal.
Yeah, that's supposed to pose out there.
Well, that's something we'll get to, once we get through this part of it.
I just don't want to lose that money.
Yeah. And, sorry, that was a long answer to say, no, we won't lose the money, and we can ask for an extension on that, that date.
Thank you.
Typically, that's granted, but.
Optimist.
Patty. Patty Harrison.
Council president.
Go ahead.
Nathan, good, good job on the presentation. You're doing, you knew, you knew this stuff good. You came up with a solution. So I like that. I mean, that was very good. And I think you have a good enough relationship with the DOT people down there, and you feel comfortable, and they feel comfortable with you. So I think that's a credit to you. And maybe the next time, we need to ask for $10 million instead of 6.6. I don't know. But, but I was going to ask you, with these hangers, the new ones, you evidently feel like there is demand for that size hanger, right?
Yeah, we, we've got demand for T-hangers, box hangers. Now, granted, with the type activity goes on, we have demand for these hangers right now. My real point would be we'd want to try to attract this, so I'd do an RFP, because this all ties into your total jet operations. So we get more FAA money if we reach a certain jet operations. And if the city ever wanted to go to a control tower, when you meet that goal, the FAA pays that bill. They'll come in and do that. Otherwise, it's on our back. And I don't think the city wants that, and I don't want it, because it's a big undertaking to put in a control tower manate. But that was the target, what I originally thought. But, yeah, we have demand for these type hangers right now. I just, I can't honestly sit here and say, I know we'll get this. But we'll have, we'll be, have the availability, the availability to provide that type, to attract that type of aircraft. I mean, a couple of years ago, I'm sorry.
Hey, that on the box hangers, he's going to make what it would take him to rent out 10 T-hangers at one shot, or something, or more, I guess, you know, a lot.
Either way, these are.
I mean, we need T-hangers, too, but the box hangers.
These are great revenue producers, because the box hangers, if we get a King Air or a Citation, that helps us with our FAA numbers. Even if we don't get that, we run it out to one person, and we still get the same value out of it. They just, they'll sublease, you know, to three or four, five small airplanes. That's typically what happens.
Okay. That, I was going to ask that, is we could lease to one person, they could have three or four smaller aircraft, and not one large aircraft, and they could have three or four planes in there opposed to one.
Yes, sir.
Or more than one, maybe not three or four.
I actually, I'll go ahead and say it. I have the highway, Florida Highway Patrol, hot on the trot, wanting one of these hangers really bad. And they have a Navajo. It's not a jet, it's not turbine, but they have like four airplanes, and they're wanting one. I mean, he's asked me last week, he's always about it.
They would consolidate from other airports, because they have a T-hanger here currently, right?
Yeah, they have one T-hanger with us right now. And they want to come from Lakeland and bring their operation in one of these.
Well, that, that was what I was going to ask you. So Lakeland already has Amazon, and then they now have a commercial. So I would think that there would be some jets like that looking for somewhere to, you know, that's kind of getting, they're kind of getting squeezed out, I would say, I would think.
They're looking. I, I think I'll get inundated with too many, and there's going to be a bunch of hurt.
We'll need four of them, six of them.
Probably 10.
We'll bring them, we'll bring them for the council, and have a two-hour meeting on.
Well, does anybody have anything else for Nathan? Or I think you're on the right track with what you presented.
Thank you.
And did a good job, Nathan.
Thank you, guys.
Does he need any action from us on it, or no? That was informational?
No, is there any action?
We have consensus of going with the box hangers and the taxiway.
I think that's.
And then there'll be paperwork, I'm sure, that we'll have to bring back before council to get formal approval.
Okay. And I think you have that consensus. So city manager report.
Item 4.1 is Dr. Stovall.
It would be a great night to bring this to you, didn't we? This is our next quarter update on what we've been doing with ZEEDC. We'll come back again in September and talk about the next quarter then. So trying to keep you informed. Our stakeholders meeting in April was one. We had here some representatives from the MPO. And we had a pretty full room of people. Vicki does a good job of advertising, and we talked about how transportation planning works. You know, we never seem to be able to hit that one as hard as you need to. So when we had our stakeholders, sorry, when we had our steering committee meeting the next month, we talked about how much interest that meeting generated, and we kind of decided that what would be the best way to use our economic summit in October would be to focus, as transportation is kind of our theme, and have several presentations, and help our citizens understand how transportation works. And that, you know, it's, it's not, it's not always in the purview of you guys, for example, to go fix a road for somebody. It may not even be our road. But they just don't understand. So we thought that would be a good topic, and I still think it will, and we'll do well with that. And our friends at MPO will come back, and we'll do good in October. Then, in May, in addition to that, Congressman Laurel Lee had asked for our assistance in convening a small business roundtable for her to understand what some of the needs for small businesses in Zephyr Hills are. And so Vicki put together a group of people, and they had that meeting. That was very good for us. And it's great to have Congresswoman here in town. Then, we had another stakeholders meeting in June. And at that meeting, city manager Poe talked about some potential incentives for another manufacturer that's looking at the town. And let's hope they, they decide to pick us, because that'll be another job generator for us. So that, that's a good thing. We, during the last couple of months, Vicki and I had a meeting with Dr. Stephen Neely. You may remember, he is a USF professor, and he is the person who actually conducted our medical biz walk for us. We did it, and believe it or not, it's been seven years. It's a long time. And he is very kind, and still very active in that kind of work, and has agreed to help us again to do another one, an update. And we'll start working on that update in the next few weeks. Our goal is, as always, is to have our research project, at least to the point we can talk about it at the economic summit. So time's kind of getting away from us on that one, and we've got to get after it. But we will. And he's really great to work with. And I mentioned to Councilman Spina, we may, at some point, come to one of you and say, can you help us get our survey in the door of one of these medical companies? Because sometimes they're not the most responsive group. And that was a request from Dr. Neely. So we'll try to, we'll try to do that when we need to. PEEDC, Pasco Economic Development Council, had a strategic planning meeting last week, or week before last now, I forget, for the, for the county. And so we had our ZEDC vice chairman, Dr. Dennis Feltwell, to represent us. And he spent the day with them, and they did a strategic plan. I'm sure it'll be presented to the county commission here in the next month or so. And then, I know you understand and remember that our chambers, the city and Zephyr Hills are merging, and will become the East Pasco Chamber. And you can imagine for CEO how much work that has been. But she said, you know, I still need to get smarter. And so she participated in an executive leadership training program with PEEDC, and she actually graduated this month. So I had asked her to bring her trophy, her plaque, but she forgot it today. But, so she's still working to get better and more effective. So we're happy to have her. Let's see. I think that's it. So, questions?
All right. Thank you, Rainey. I think it's important for those quarterly updates, so we can keep us abreast of what's going on, and I appreciate it. If there's no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you again, Rainey.
Item 4.2 is code enforcement update.
Good evening. Bill Burgess, building official, director of code enforcement. Tonight, we have a short presentation. It'll go over some statistics. There'll be some slides. And then we'll answer questions as we go along, or at the end, however you want to handle that. So with that, Joel, I'll start the presentation.
All right, counsel, if you have something, just interject whenever a question comes up. So we'll keep things moving.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joel Bacon, code enforcement for City of Zephyr Hills. I appreciate the opportunity to present the status report for our current year. Our first couple of slides are going to be some of our accomplishments we've conducted in the past couple of years. These are some, some of the demolitions that we've conducted, mainly voluntarily through the property owners. I think only one or two of these have we got leans on that the city actually had to conduct. All my amnations are working. Could do.
Oh, he made it all fancy.
Hey, fancy.
His transition. These are some vacant lots that code enforcement officer Sutton has worked with property owners to voluntary go out into a bay, that we had a lot of issues with homeless, the illegal camping, and trash and debris accumulating, which I want to go back on. 64 acres, it was a lot. It was a lot. So this is from January the 1st to current date. So this is from January the first to current date. These are specifically closed code cases, ones we've gotten compliance on. And you can see the numerous issues and violations we've been working on. We do get the opportunity to work with Zephyr Hills Police Department. They help us tremendously with some of our violations. Some of the properties we go on, we absolutely need them there. We're there, it's just, it's a safety issue. Those are some of the debris, the different violations, chickens, camping on vacant lots. Do wanna recognize Officer Seth, Seth Healy for the Homeless Liaison Coalition. His, his initiative, I don't know if that was sponsored by Chief Brewer or not, but that's helping tremendously with the homeless. They're finally getting the, the help they need, and where to go and how to get it. Fugitive grocery carts. Unfortunately, some of our citizens make their way, and they leave them in the right of ways. And right now, we're collecting them. We're working on getting them back to the proprietors. I'm not having too much compliance with that, but we're gonna make it happen.
Joel, what do you do? Call them and tell them you have?
That's correct, sir. Some of it emails. We've had a bunch of empty promises right now, and coming back and getting them. We do work with Jackie Boggs, our senior code support representative, as far as business tax receipts. A lot of our proprietors, they'll either get the notice and won't come back and follow it through, so we have to go out and alert them what they're in violation of. Nuisance vehicles, pretty much says what it is. If you have a vehicle that's dilapidated in your front yard, and it's not running or tagged, we're gonna let you know about it. Parking violations, we don't do too many of these. We've been working with Public Works, and with the new sidewalks that are going in, and anyhow, we're trying to help everybody out as much as we can with that. ZPD helps us out tremendously as well with those parking violations. Failure to acquire building permits. That has become an issue this year with specifically fence installers. And it's just luck of the draw, being able to do it on patrol and go around and find in those violators, and verifying that they have a permit or not.
Joel, if I can just interject real quick, because I know there's been a lot of conversation between myself and building department. Were the, are we the only entity in Pasco County that requires a fence permit? Do we know, do the other cities, or we know Pasco County doesn't?
I'm not sure about the other municipalities. Pasco County does not issue permits at this time for fences.
That's a conversation, yeah.
They don't fall under the building code. There's no standard for the installation of the fence, so it's a zoning requirement.
That's the conversation we're having, is, do we need to require fence permits?
So a lot of these people might think they don't need one, because they don't get one in Pasco County, and.
Correct. Yeah, most of, I mean, the fence guy, the fence contractors, they know.
Competition.
But, yeah, a lot of those, a lot of the violations are because of.
Price was better.
They're calling each other. Yeah, they're, they're calling on each other, we'll say. So, you know, yeah, somebody else's price was better. That's exactly right. All right, sorry.
I have one question for you, Joel. If, if you need to repair your fence, do you need a permit for that?
I'm gonna say no. If it's, if it's damaged thirty percent or more, we do make you remove the fence. So if you've gotta remove your fence and put up a new one.
I'd just like to redo it at like every ten years, and not the metal, but the boards.
At this point, we were trying to move away from fence permits, so I'm gonna say no. But if it's inside the city jurisdiction and CRA districts, there are design standards that we have to follow by for those fence installations, so that, we do require fence permits.
Just wondering for a friend.
And you're in.
Tell your friend that you're in the CRA.
I know, I know where I'm at.
It is. Wendy Hines, she's our fire inspector, and we do get to work with her on various fire violations. We do require our proprietors to register what's called the compliance engine. That way, it monitors your restaurants, ancels, fire suppression systems, fire alarms, stuff of that nature. The picture here is a hoarder we had, a habitual offender, and this is obviously a blocked fire egress. Minimum building standards, faulty plumbing, dilapidated roofs, dangerous electric. Believe it or not, a missing attic access doors covered in our International Property Maintenance Code. All the different violations that can, it's mainly safety. And I put fence in there because it's still a safety violation. If you have a pool that's accessible, we don't want kids getting there and getting hurt. Signs, feather flags, thank you, and snipe signs. When we have the time, we go and open up sign violations, like habitual offenders, but mainly if your snipe sign's in the right of way, we're gonna take them. It's litter. Come on. Oh, there we go. Stormwater, silt fence inspections. Right now, we have Act eight, Act, here we go, thank you. And we've conducted thirty-nine silt fence inspections. I do wanna thank Shane for introducing me to Efren Figuera. He is the Pasco County Stormwater Inspector, and there is Anthony Furlough, who's a great contact. They assist us anytime we have questions, or say we have open construction sites. Like lately, it's been dry, and you'll have fugitive dust that'll escape some of our, our sites and go into Pasco County jurisdiction. He'll contact us, and we'll work with him, and vice versa. And this is a picture of erosion control of silt fence. Obviously, there's a breach. So we contact the contractor, they go out and fix it. Property fence inspections, we've done seventy-one this year. To give you an idea, last year, there was a hundred and seventy-six fence permits issued. This year for citations, they're dead. I wanna recognize Ms. Wilkinson for pushing the See Click Fix app. That's been helping us tremendously with citizens, helping us find these violations and notify them. And we're also working with Mr. Panic to where our Intergov software is now integrated into See Click Fix, to where the complainant can follow along on the violation and see how the code, code case is progressing. It's good transparency. Next slide. Last year's citations, we issued thirty-two, thirty-two citations, and those are the different ones that were, were actually issued citations for over thirteen thousand dollars. This is after you issue a notice of violation, you're not getting any compliance, you go out and cite the violator, and goes to court. Y'all have any questions?
I'd just like to say you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate you keeping our city clean.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, this one of those, it's a job that never ends, it's just continual, so. I mean, you never get to see something come to completion, like a sidewalk, or a park, or anything like that. I will say that, I think that it's important for us, and you guys do a good job of staying on top of code violations, because I can see an issue, I brought it to someone's attention, and you guys took care of it already, but the Hercules Park, we don't want that place opening up, and then immediately having code enforcement problems right there in a brand-new park, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We're just gonna say the same thing. It's never-ending. It's like Groundhog Day.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks all for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank y'all for coming down tonight. This is helpful to me to see what y'all do. I know what you do, but it's really nice to see y'all at a council meeting, and to come down and give us a report like this. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Lance.
All right. All right, item four point three, the cruising field bleacher cover. So Shane went through and had a conversation with Centennial Contractors Enterprises through Gordian, which is a state, holy cow, state contract, thank you, sorry, state contract. He had received a couple of different prices. One was for tubular steel at a price of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then there was an alternate bid for I-beam steel, and that bid came in at one hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. Staff's recommendation is to approve the contract with Centennial Contractors Enterprises for the amount of one ninety-four, two fifty-nine, thirty-three. Any questions? The scope of work on that is, I believe, two hundred and thirty-four days from the time we give them the notice to proceed. They'll have to draw the plans, engineer permits, and then construct.
Does this plan, I know it covers the bleachers, does it cover the extended area for picnic tables or anything underneath it?
Public Works Director Shane LeBlanc. To answer that question, this particular unit is just for the bleachers itself. It's a hundred and sixteen feet long, seventeen feet wide, eleven foot high, and it's a cantilever design with a bislope roof, so that we don't have vertical columns in front of the bleachers that would block your view, and then also, it would be hazardous for the football players to run into a steel column. So it's a design-build project, but to answer your question, it's just the bleacher area for right now.
And so completion date would be roughly February of next year?
We're gonna try to speed it up a little bit, work on it over the winter, when the football folks aren't out there, and try to get it done December, January, hopefully. And if I could just add one thing to city manager Poe's contract price, I recommend that we put a ten percent contingency on top of that contract amount for unforeseen conditions.
Okay, and you need a, a motion for approval?
I move we approve this contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Centennial Contractors Enterprises. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thanks, Shane.
Thank you.
All right, four point four.
Four point four. We would like to have a discussion with city council for, regarding a moratorium on marijuana dispensaries, smokehouse, smoke shops, and car washes. Is that something that council has a desire to discuss, or are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, on all, to me.
Okay.
I don't know, that's the rest.
It's gonna be a short conversation, if, if.
Honestly, I think, I think it's a discussion the entire city has all the time, so I mean.
So what we'll do is, is if, if council is interested in a moratorium on those three uses, we will work with the city attorney, and we'll bring back, try to bring it back the next meeting, a moratorium on those uses.
I agree with councilmen.
And we'll bring the justification, you know, obviously, there'll be justification in that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see the justification. I think I'm a little hesitant to go all in on it, even though I know there are really a number of them out there going, and it's not just affecting us. I mean, it's impacting other communities as well. You see them everywhere. But at the same time, I'm a little hesitant of, kind of the supply-demand, or, you know, the market, what the market will bear. And eventually, somebody's gonna say, we can't build any more car washes, because no one's, no one's going anymore. But I don't, I surely don't think it hurts to look at it.
Just to clarify something, the moratorium would be put in place to put a hold on them as we, so staff can look at different, maybe stricter requirements, or reducing locations, or, you know, prohibiting them, completely kind of look at where we wanna go long-term with them. It would be a temporary hold.
Yeah, that's, that's an important note. It would not be a permanent ban.
Right, right.
It'd be a temporary, more, temporary ban, so that we can tighten our, our rules.
Maybe look at what zones they're fitted for, instead of, you know, all general commercial or something, maybe.
Because I think that's kind of concern right now, is that it's so broad, that there's not much city or staff can do if they meet that zoning area, and it, you know.
As far as the car washes are concerned, with our water issue, honestly, and I know those guys say, well, you know, it's, it's, we reuse it, it's cheaper, but when you're paying thirty dollars a month, unlimited washes, how many times you gonna go through there, you know? And it's just, and I think the last guy that was in here, he said something about the use per day, I think, and that was not right, because I called up, it was, I think, John Bostick, and it got with you, and the car wash is used a lot more than he led us to believe, so.
Doesn't hurt my feelings.
Is that a conflict for you?
Oh, wait, I didn't think about it. Were we at a conflict?
You know.
Talking about new ones, not current ones.
New and not existing, yeah.
I've been there thirty-three years, so I'm fixing to retire.
So you have, Mayor, do you have anything on that, or, so you have a consensus on?
Perfect. We'll get, working on it.
All righty. You have anything else?
Uh, for the, no, sir.
Okay.
I have some, can I have something else before we go to?
To citizen comments? Sure.
I handed out a letter from Pasco County, and I didn't keep one. Could I get one? Thank you. Last week, I had a meeting with the city manager, the CRA director, the planning director, Rodney. Were you there, Hunter? I hadn't run there. Anyway, a couple of people talking about affordable housing issues, how to deal with home repairs, how we can improve the CRA and, and housing standards. And the idea of the community development block grants came up. And do you remember the last time we've applied for a CDBG grant, Todd?
Oh, it was like the late nineties, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, when we went for the downtown CDBG.
But we've done it since then, with, we've done.
Well, I had an open development grant to apply for.
Okay. Well, anyway, I talked with Ron Oakley. I went to the chamber breakfast. He had the community development director for Pasco County call me. She called me this afternoon. And I just asked, now, we're not a part of the county program. We've been, we got out of it in nineteen ninety-nine or so, and we've been part of the small cities grant application process, which is a federal program, but we apply through Tallahassee. And when you apply for one of those grants, I think you can get up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is it more than that? Okay. So, we, but citizens within the city are eligible for some of the housing programs, regardless of where they live in the county. So she just told me that they do, and I took some notes, but I'll try to. Rental rehab, they do small, I can't read that. Housing program, or some of the septic to sewer if we wanted, and it's all income base, all qualification basis, where they have to be below a certain income level. They do housing, and we can look up, they can do up to two hundred thousand dollars for housing improvements. They do a variety of different programs. If we wanna get back in the county's urban community development block programs for the fiscal years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven, we'd have to let them know this week, which just coincidentally, calling her today turned out to be the, the application period. She estimates that we would be eligible for about a hundred thousand dollars a year, plus it would open up these other programs to city residents. So I know it's kind of rushed, we don't have a ton of information, but we've been part of the county program before. It's only a three-year period. We haven't accessed the competitive small cities process, and I was just thinking, maybe we should look, you know, consider going back into the county program, at least for three years. And then we can assess how we're doing that. We can see what some of the changes are in the small grant process. Small city grant process has been in the meantime, but it might be helpful to us, it'd be worthwhile to us, I think, to. be worthwhile to us, I think, to take advantage of this, get a couple hundred thousand dollars, three thousand dollars over the next three, three hundred thousand dollars over the next three years, and we could work with the CRA and planning on different ways to implement the money and introduce citizens to what the county.
And can I ask, because I know, and I remember the CDBG grant, was, was the CDBG grant, there was an economic grant, was that part of it too? Or was that different then?
We could apply for community revitalization, elimination of blight, different things like that. Yeah, and then we could apply for one for like seven hundred and fifty thousand, and with that, we'd be eligible for the economic development grant. And we've used that a couple times, as well as we did almost a lot of downtown with that grant money.
We did some intersections, didn't we, or, or Cossack Road or something?
It was either Cossack or Greenslope was that?
Greenslope, yeah.
Greenslope, we did some. We were able to use that, like access to Walmart, using that as economic development.
But that was, that's been a while, though.
It's been a long time.
And what, what you're proposing is we'd get the guaranteed money. That's what we didn't get when we opted out of the program, but we got the opportunity to go after them.
And it's a competitive grant, so unless you apply for it, and you have to do certain things and get points, and then you go through the process.
And Fred Fox was the guy.
Fred Fox was our consultant.
Right.
And he probably made ten percent of the grant as an income for doing the process. But I was thinking that it might be worthwhile, since we're not doing that, to do this now. And because we're working with homeless people, with housing needs, affordable housing, this would be money that could open up other programs within the city, in addition to the hundred thousand. The hundred thousand we could take and use as for a single project, but we could use some of the other funding for housing and things like that.
I mean, I'm not totally understanding the exact numbers on it, but I'm just a little concerned where it says if the city chooses to participate in the county, it will not be eligible to apply for grants under the state CDBG program, which I'm assuming we've got some money through that, and it'll become part of the county's. I really hate this June twenty-eighth to make a decision. I'd like to know why we went away from it before in nineteen ninety-nine or whatever it was.
Before, because we could get more money.
Well, that's, that's why, so that's why I'm, that's why I'm kind of concerned.
But see, this we could get in, and we could get into it if we make the decision now. And it just, it's bad that it's this week, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the only part that's got me kind of.
But we haven't applied for a grant in a number of years. So to apply for a grant, we'd have to pick the project. We'd have to make sure we met all the conditions. It's not guaranteed. And then when, if we don't want to do it after three years, then we get back out and we can apply again as a small city.
And staff feels like that's the best way to, best route, Todd, Gail, I mean, no? No, no?
Billy?
Billy, I don't.
I, I saw the email at about four-thirty today, so I don't know.
My problem is it's just so quick that.
I don't know if I'll be able to give you any kind of advice on that.
When's the last time we did a CDBG grant?
It's been probably a decade ago.
Twenty sixteen, twenty?
Ten years?
I thought we did a few years ago, there was a consultant from like Jacksonville or somewhere.
Fred Fox, but I don't believe it's, it's been a while since we've done one.
Oh, he's been here since you've been here.
Yeah, because he's been here since I've been here.
Well, the one thing that Bill and I were just chatting about that could come up potentially under an economic development grant, one of these industrial users, we, we've had a couple pre-application meetings with folks, and one way in which that economic development grant funds can be used is for a rail spur. There is potentially one user that has identified that they, they will be using rail, but again, it's very early in the process, we don't know that for sure, but there's been some general discussion. So it could come up, but really don't know for sure yet, but that's the only thing that.
Don't we have to have an initial grant to qualify for the economic grant, or can you do that separate?
Yeah, it'd have to be a, the, the individual company would have to be the applicant that applies, that's creating X number of jobs to receive the economic development funding.
I mean, don't we have to have a revitalization or housing or some other project to qualify for the economic development in addition to?
No, you could apply individually for the economic development grant. We've done that, I think, two instances where it wasn't tied to anything else.
With this, with that, my understanding is you can apply for one of the three, the revitalization, blight, or whatever, yeah. And you, and the, and also apply for economic development. So you can apply for both, but you just can't apply for two of the three at the same time. Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's my extent of knowledge on CDBG. Well, and I think the, the economic development is one and a half million now? Instead of seven fifty?
Oh, up to, it used to be seven fifty.
Yeah, it was, it's gone up though.
Half a million, less than seven.
One point five million.
One point five.
Todd, you were saying that for the rail spur thing, that would be what the city would do on its own, or you say it would be done through the county?
Yeah, the applicant would have to be the individual business. Now, we've facilitated economic development grants, brought in like a Fred Fox, a consultant that would get, get ten percent. He's not a part of our engineering team that we have a contract with now, but I believe we got some other folks that are under contract that could help facilitate a grant to represent the city on behalf of that ED grant.
No, I'm, I'm just, I really couldn't say, let's do it with this short a notice without having a few more things answered myself. I mean, I don't know if we do it before the twenty-eighth, I'm not sure, but I know it's only three years, but something could happen in those three years that could affect it, I don't know. That's, that's just me.
I'm, I'm not sure, you know, and it is kind of like, we haven't used it in ten years.
I know, and then.
But the, just like I throw something away, the minute I throw it away, I need it, you know?
That's, that's the only thing that concerns me is.
I don't know.
We had a little more time, though.
When, when do we have to give them?
Very analog.
Well, we'd have to tell them by Friday. So we would have to make a decision tonight, really, while we're all together. You know, I just think it's kind of a bird in the hand. And, and it, it opens us to other funding.
Sounds like a good idea to me. I mean, I, but I get your apprehension on having to make the decision, and I just saw it when I came in.
And, you know, it says the city will be part of the program, but it'll also be part of the county's home investment partnership and emergency of solution grants. Be a lot more. One of our biggest issues right now, one of the things we've been working on is affordable
Yeah, have some, I mean, I agree, it has some good elements, I'm just, I don't like that, you know, in the city, we take ourselves out of the, out of the game for three years. That's, that's my biggest concern.
Then we haven't been playing.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, we, we.
It's like, haven't even been doing it for eight years or more, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think about that property, where we're talking about the rail spur, and, you know, we turned down a development, and there was no, nothing on the horizon, and then boom, in a couple months, it happened. So I mean, that's the only thing that, that concerns me. I, I mean, I, I would not be in support of it right this time. If we had more time to look at it, I would definitely, because that does have some good elements to it.
We applied for one in two thousand eighteen for late necessity concept plan. That's what it looks like in my notes.
I know we've talked about them a while since I've been here, but I don't know what ever came about.
Do you want to vote on it, or, or do you want a consensus say no, or yes, or, we have to vote on it. We have to ask the mayor to put it on the agenda, and then we'd have to vote for it. Or we, if you don't want to do it, just say so, and we will just adjourn.
Like I said, myself, I just couldn't support it right at this moment.
I just hate having, I do, I kind of hate having to, like, know right now, you know? Because I don't know how much, can you not be a part of the home that, I mean, what?
Not eligible to be part of those if we're not part of the county, and our citizens aren't. The only thing the citizens are eligible for is the ship program, which is another housing.
It's through the county only.
And I guess my question would be on the home investment partnership, is that an unlimited amount of funds, or is there a finite amount of funds that it's, you know what, you know, understand what I mean? Because I know a lot of that ship program has X amount of funds, and when they're gone, they're gone.
I can't, I can't recommend approval of it without really looking at what the impact would be. I have no idea what it would mean for us one way or another, so.
What they were saying was, so that must be county money, those two items must be money's the county receives from either the federal government or the state.
I think you're right, though, there's got to be a finite amount of money, and then is the county in charge of deciding who gets what?
Well, and that's.
That's, see, that's my, that's kind of my concern, too.
Those ship funds, they go pretty quick, you know? You have them, and then they're, they're kind of gone. They do help people for sure, though.
What they do with the funding, it provides for neighborhood revitalization, home buyer programs, homeowner rehabilitation, not-for-profit agency housing development, homelessness initiatives, and funding public services. It can help people, individuals, clear their home. Have several programs to help purchasing. They have funds for slum and blight inspections. Money they receive is based on income levels.
Yeah, I mean, and I know it does a lot of good, for sure, to some people. I just wish we had more time on it.
Citizen comments, has anyone signed up to speak? Okay.
Speak. Do you ladies like to come in? One at a time and have speak, anybody? Are you guys signed up? Elaine, Catherine, or Lauren?
They left, I think they were sitting on the front row here. I think they were here for the advent health.
Okay. They didn't say what they were signed up for.
No, they signed up for city council.
I think they left.
All right, so there's no one, no citizen signed up to speak? All right, then I'll move on to the mayor's announcements.
The only thing I have is just to remind you guys to turn in your city manager review. If you'll put it in a envelope and in my box this week, that would be great. You each have one, okay?
Can I add, I know that the plan, I'm not in.
No, we're gonna do it twenty-second.
Okay, all right.
Yep, yep.
I just want to make sure I had.
I just still want it in so I can run, meet with, I can still meet with Sandra.
No, you're good, I just wanted to.
You're not gonna be here July eighth?
July eighth, I will not be here. No, I'm out that week.
Okay.
I'll tell, it's a long story.
All right.
Yeah, no, that was, that was my thing to let you know.
Get yourself a cardboard cutout and sit in your seat.
And then I just, I, I got this from the ROTC, J R O T C, and I'm not sure what we do with these little coins. Do you keep them somewhere? It's a thank you letter for your donation to the high school battalion. So.
We'll take them and set them out, like, out in the lobby, or up in the lobby, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, city manager?
So I don't know if you've seen this young man sitting behind Lucy here.
I was gonna ask if you could introduce him.
This is Ricardo Quinones, did I say it right? Quinones. He is our deputy city clerk, so his first day was today. So he got blessed with a decently long meeting.
This is short, this is short, unless this is a short meeting.
Usually twice as long as this.
So he is, like I said, today's his first day, so he has a nice long day. Hopefully he shows up for day two. I'll see you tomorrow morning. So, welcome to, to the team.
Welcome.
You're welcome. I know we've had some individual conversations about the property at Pretty Pond and Wire Road, the potential of purchasing that for park property. I don't know if we want to schedule a workshop, or if we want to continue with individual conversations, but we've received the appraisals on that, and the property owner is eager to have a conversation, either us purchasing it or them moving forward with their development. So something that we need to talk about. Reminder, Summerfest, the Fourth of July festivities at Zephyr Park will be the twenty-ninth. That will be from twelve PM to nine-thirty, fireworks going off about nine o'clock-ish. I will be on vacation July eighth through the eleventh. Todd and Shane are handling a, a meeting between Duke and Metro, and Matt will be handling the council meeting on Monday night. And then we've had a few meetings with Jones Edmonds regarding our water use permit, the latest one being today. They are working on the final draft of the response to the last RAI. Doug Manson is, is speaking with Darren, is the bureau chief of permitting. Not sure what that conversation is, but he's working with them. Doug represents the Evans and Orsi Development, the Agwells that we're looking to acquire. So he's been helping us with our response. There's some language I have to get with Matt on regarding the environmental management plan, the EMP location, which is on, it's a, we have to monitor the wetland levels, make sure we don't draw down too far. So there's a pond on the old golf course, Valley Oaks Golf Course, so we're gonna put some language in the agreement that they'll provide us an easement at the time that everything's approved. And then it was requested that, that we talk, well, we talked to Cassidy about the, the plan, she's no longer there, that's a new employee, Tammy, but they've requested that we have a conversation prior to submittal, so that's being worked on. Hopefully next week, we'll be able to schedule that meeting, get the meeting scheduled and get that out. We also talked about what do we do next, because as we've talked about, and many of you are aware, the, the permit that we're hoping to get covers the development that we know of today. And so I think in the near future, we're going to, we need to schedule a workshop on what do we do next, you know, what are our next options? And so we talked to the consultants a little bit about that today, and trying to figure out what our, what our options are, our alternatives are going forward. That's all I have for this evening. Any questions?
No, I just want to, real quick, like, I don't want to belabor the point, but when we meet with the consultant, can we have all interested parties at the meeting so that we're not just sending things back and forth three months at a time?
Yes.
Okay. City attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, city council, we'll start with Councilman Spina.
I just had, I, I thought the impact fee study was kind of an urgent, where are we on that?
It was supposed to be on this evening. We had a, we went to write the ordinance, and the ordinance that was provided to us from Mr. Mullins, Clancy Mullins. There was some concern that it didn't cover everything. So we have, we have impact fees, transportation impact fees that are chapter one fifty-two, and then we have impact fees, the parks and public safety that are one fifty-five. When he put the ordinance together, it didn't really cover everything, so there was a concern that if we brought it tonight, that we may have to come back and do a cleanup ordinance. So we pushed it off till next meeting, so July eighth, it should be. next meeting, so July eighth, it should be on the agenda. Hopefully, everything will be right, so we do two hearings, and we're done, and we don't have to do, come back and do a cleanup.
Yeah, my review of it, I, I just thought it was, maybe some things were missed in our code that weren't addressed, so we had a meeting with the consultants and went over all of that, and we're addressing those to make sure it's all, all encompassing.
So, an update to that is Clancy sent an email today, I don't know if you've seen it yet, um, of, of a new draft language for the ordinance. So that came in, uh, this afternoon, I don't know, about three o'clock.
Question. Doctor.
Um, I'd like to thank code enforcement, um, for what you're doing, and Nathan, I think you're doing a great job with the airport, and all of our department heads do a great job, but, um, so, we're so lucky that we have the department heads that we have and the employees that we have, and that's all I got.
I would just want to let Nathan know, you're doing, that public speaking, you're doing good, boy. You're doing real good. So, no, I'm serious, you look more comfortable out there, you knew the subject material. Great job. That's it.
Okay, and, and again, thank everybody for coming, and it was a pretty spirited meeting tonight, and a long meeting. Ricardo, welcome aboard. I'm sorry you have to walk home in the dark now, though, but, uh.
Can I forget, I forgot to say one thing. We did lose a member of our community, Johnny Harold, this week. He was in our class. Um, he's Ellis Harold's son. And, yep, Chief. Chief passed away, yeah. And so his funeral will be on Saturday, and his viewing is on Friday night, so if you want information on that, let me know, but it's a huge loss to our class.
Is it out at the, what is it, that school on Island, Florida, Christian?
It's Fairhaven. It's at Fairhaven. So anyways, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up. Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, then I will adjourn the meeting.